Oh, it is sometimes. Okay.
You ready, Sandy?
We're ready.
Ready?
Yeah.
Call to order and roll call, please.
Chair Fredrickson?
Here.
Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
Commissioner DeFries is excused. Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Hunsicker is excused. Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes on November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and December eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
To approve as...
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Delayed.
Alrighty, item two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matters or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one. And then we have... Any further comments at this time? Thank you. Have reports, pass cancel action. Richard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. There are two items that went before the City Council on December eighteenth. They were both text amendments. One was concerning increasing the allowable size for detached accessory structures. And the other one had to do with allowing detached accessory dwellings in the R one, in R one forty and RR zoning districts. Both of those were approved by the council.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And now, item four, rezoning case, RZ one eight dash zero 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 five. A request from KTH Consulting applicant in Monawar, a Paracha property owner, for rezoning of certain property from R one ten residential, single-family, ten thousand square foot lot minimum to R one six residential, single-family, six thousand square foot lot minimum. Rezoning is requested to allow the development of a single-family subdivision with approximately forty-seven lots with an area of an open space. The subject property is located on the west side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, south of Mission Boulevard, and is eleven point eighteen acres. The property is further described as a portion of the north half of the southeast corridor of Section nineteen, T twenty-one N, R sixteen W of the G and SRM, Mojave County, Arizona.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, this item was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission in November. December fourth, council also held a public hearing on this matter. They did direct the second public hearing be held, so that will be this evening, tonight, to gather additional public comment. I'm gonna kinda go through it somewhat quicker than we did previously, since most of you are already familiar with the case. This is the property, it's on the west side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, south of Mission Boulevard. Show some photos of the site, also photo from the south side of the site looking north, there's a hillside area of the site, the remainder is relatively flat. This is the current zoning in the area. The property itself is zoned R one ten. You have R one six zoning to the east, which is the Canyon Bluffs Estates subdivision. You have commercial zoning to the north, which is the Mission Hills subdivision. And then you have a recorded but undeveloped subdivision to the west, which is Grand Bluffs Two, and that is zoned R one ten. And this is the aerial map of the site, showing again the developed Canyon Bluffs Estates Two subdivision and the two undeveloped, or three actually, three undeveloped subdivisions surrounding it, two of which are residential and one is commercial. The property is about eleven acres in size. Currently, the designation in the general plan is three to eight units per acre. As far as the development history within the area, the south half of the Grand Bluffs area to the west of the site was rezoned from O to R one ten in two thousand three. The Grand Bluffs, the developed part of Grand Bluffs was recorded in two thousand four. The Grand Bluffs Two and Three were recorded subsequent to that in two thousand five and two thousand seven. The Canyon Bluffs area to the east of the site, Canyon Bluffs Estates One, which is further to the east and undeveloped right now, was recorded in two thousand six after rezoning to R one six in two thousand five. And the Canyon Bluffs Estates Two, which is the developed area, was very, followed suit very soon after. The Mission Hills area to the north, which is the commercial zone area, was originally zoned C two and then was later, and then was recorded in two thousand five. Later that same year, it was designated C two HMR when the C two HMR zoning district was established in our zoning ordinance. Add to public notification, as you are aware, there were some, excuse me, some comments or concerns over public notification of the site. We did originally post a notice on the site in October, posted two additional notices in December. We published public notices within the Kingman Daily Minor as well, both in October and also December. And all starting property owners within three hundred feet of the site were sent notices of the public hearings via first-class mail in October and then again in December. That list of properties was generated from the property owner information at the assessor's office. And all of the above actions follow our adopted notification process, and we determined that we followed the notification process properly in both instances. This map just kinda gives you an idea of what, who received notices in this case. The red designation is the site. All the orange lots you see there are the lots that received notices that are within three hundred feet or some part thereof are within three hundred feet of the site. At the November thirteenth P and Z meeting, there were several comments from the public primarily concerning traffic impacts, including the need for a traffic light potentially at Jackson Wallop Mountain Road. There was also some comments about the condition of Jackson Street. At the December eleventh P and Z commission meeting, you did take comments during the public comment session, as a lot of people were under the impression that we were gonna be discussing that at the meeting, so you did take those comments. And those were generally, again, regarding traffic, illegal dumping in the area, increased crime, concerns with impacts on views and housing values, as well as the proper posting of public notices. We didn't receive any objections from any departments or agencies on this proposal. So, the, again, the proposal for this site is a forty-seven lot development. This is just conceptual. The subdivision itself will have to come before you later. The number of lots might change potentially depending on the final design, probably the forty to the forty-seven lot range. So part of our analysis for any zoning cases to determine whether there's a demonstrated need for the proposed zoning, and in this case, both the R one six and R one ten single families, homes, the difference is really just in lot size. Over the last several years, the majority of single-family construction is on lots of ten thousand, they're less than ten thousand square feet, so it does appear to be a demand in the current market. Suitability of the proposed zoning district, we looked at the density of the surrounding subdivisions. Canyon Bluffs Two, which is directed to the east, has a density of about three point seven units per acre, and the homes themselves range from about a little over fourteen hundred square feet to a little less than twenty-four hundred square feet, with an average of about seventeen hundred square feet. The Grand Bluffs area to the west is zoned R one ten, and the overall density of the three subdivisions is about two units per acre. livable square footage of Grand Bluffs One, which is the only developed section, ranges from about two thousand to about thirty-five hundred square feet, with an average of about twenty-three hundred square feet. So the subject site itself would be similar to Grand Bluffs Two in terms of lot density and also lot sizes, and the home sizes also would likely be similar. And so it would appear to be a suitable location for the zoning based upon the surrounding community. Impacts on the change of zoning, certainly if you have an R one six district, you would have more lots and that would add, would mean somewhat higher traffic counts in the area. We estimated that there would be somewhere between three hundred and eighty and four hundred and forty-seven vehicle trips per day if you had forty to forty-seven homes developed on the site. That compares to about two hundred and eighty-five trips per day if you left it at R one ten and you had about thirty lots developed. So that's a difference of about ninety-five to a hundred and sixty-two trips per day. And just to clarify, a trip is any time you pass a certain point on a road, so even if you consider one trip to be you going from your home to a store and returning, that's actually considered two trips. Typically, nine and a half trips per day is typical for a single-family home. You did recommend that TIA be required at the time of the subdivision development, and that would indicate whether certain improvements would be required either on the site or nearby. When questioned was again whether a traffic light is warranted, that may come out of the study. However, should be pointed out that Jackson, where probably the logical location for a light is only about less than a half mile from the existing light at Mission Boulevard and Railroad Street, and typically, we like to have at least a half mile between lights. Another option would be if the Mission Boulevard were completed past Jackson Street to where the pavement currently ends, then the traffic could go to the existing light. If the site is developed with forty-seven homes on the eleven acres, it would be an overall density of about four point two units per acre. And the general plan projects three to eight units per acre on the site, which is the same on both sides of the property, both in the Grand Bluffs area as well as the Canyon Bluffs area. So, in November, your recommendation to the council was stated on this slide here. You recommended approval with the following conditions. One, that the areas on site with an average cross slope of fifteen percent or greater is defined by this twenty-one hillside ordinance. Shall be retained for open space purposes with the existing slopes left undisturbed. Two, the developer shall work with Unisource to relocate existing power line that crosses subject property. Three, future lot design shall accommodate the transwestern pipeline easement located in the western property boundary. Four, future lot design shall incorporate a vehicle non-access easement along Indian Lots of Bad News Slaughterhouse Canyon Road. And a TIA would be required in conjunction with the preliminary plat. So your decision options this evening are to affirm the previous recommendation with the same conditions. You could affirm the previous recommendation with some changes to those conditions. You could table action on the item. And any, if you do that, we would recommend that you direct staff as to what you want us to do further, whether it's further research or further information, or four would be recommend denial. And with that, I'll try answering questions you have, the represent for the applicants here as well.
I have a question. On, didn't we at one point go over for text amendments for new developments and subdivisions that we require like full street pavement? Was that ever, didn't we bring that about?
We've talked about that, and there have been some changes to our street standards. One of those would be that the right-of-way widths that you see here, like fifty-foot typical, that would be changed to fifty-four feet, so there've been some modifications to our standards. So, within the subdivision itself, all streets will have to be fully improved, and the west side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road would have to be completed. The east side is already fully improved with sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Okay, 'cause on here, it says for the transportation, it says partly paved. So what part would be partly paved in this subdivision?
Uh, let's see if I can create the aerial view here. So currently, this side of Slaughterhouse Canyon Road is improved with pavement, curb, gutter and sidewalk, extends about down to about this point and ends. So when this subdivision develops, they'll have to improve the other half of the roadway with curb, gutter and sidewalk and pavement.
Okay, alrighty. And was everybody notified within the zoning parameters? Everybody was...
Yes, everybody...
Sent a notice in...
Everybody within three feet was notified, and we did post the site on two locations this time, just in case one of the signs blew over, but they're both there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear, that notification was...
Right.
Okay, alright, Rich, thank you.
Do we have a breakdown in the existing tract east of Slaughterhouse on how many six thousand square foot lots are existing now?
And you're referring to this area over here in this subdivision?
Yes.
I do have that. Because I don't have the exact number, I do have a breakdown of the lot sizes, and, you know, several of them are, a number of them are six thousand square feet. Some are larger, some are, you know, ten to thirteen thousand square feet, but the majority are less than ten. But I don't have the exact breakdown. Sorry about that.
Fair enough. Any further questions, Richard? Alright, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before I open this up, I have a list of names up here, and I'm going to adhere to the three-minute rule as you speak, and we are only gonna allow one individual per household to speak on any one agenda item, one trip to the podium, so I'm gonna start off with the first individual's name, Greg Ring.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Greg Ring. I live in Canyon Bluffs Estates Two on Horsemen Avenue. I just have questions. Perhaps the commission or staff can answer them about the, my concerns are about the traffic there on Jackson Street and Mission Boulevard. Seems to me that with these two subdivisions going in, that there's gonna be a lot more traffic involved there, and I don't think a stoplight needs to be put in there on Jackson. But my concern is, what's the plan for improving Mission Boulevard along there? It seems that it would only be done if the commercial lots along Mission are developed. And I don't know how long that's going to take, so I would just like to find out, what's the plan for improving that? I, you know, if there's just one subdivision going in, I don't, personally, I don't know, but I would think that there wouldn't be that much of a traffic impact just for the one subdivision. But now we have two of them going in there, those are residential, and my understanding is that there wouldn't be any requirement that Mission Boulevard be paved all the way down to the stoplight there. So, I don't know if anything can be done on this from this zoning application, but I'd just like to find out what the plan is for future pavement of this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Tim or Tina Walsh? Tim? Sorry, sir, I couldn't tell if that was...
I'll go with Tim. Thank you, Chairman.
I'll give you that one.
Thank you, Chairman Fredrickson. I'd just like to state my opposition to this rezone. I live in Granite Bluffs subdivision, two-two-six-five Cap Rock there, and currently, there's, this site being zoned R one ten, by allowing this R one six, that smaller density lots gets closer and closer to this, to the larger density that we have in our subdivision. I would like to point out, back in two thousand four, this request was made as well. The owner was looking to rezone it from R one ten down to R one six, and ultimately, the city council denied that and kept it at the R one ten. So, just like to make that point. But typically, if the commission does feel that this is something that they'd like to consider, typically, the city of Kingman has generally allowed buffer zones, that you won't go a drastic change from an R one six down to an R one ten. You might see an R one eight somewhere in the middle. I would be open to something similar to that, but a R one six, keep pushing it closer and closer, eventually, they're gonna be all the way over there. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next person is Stephen Gallows? Gallows? Sorry. Please step up and state your name, sir.
Evening, Stephen Galloway, two-one-five-six Horsemen, Commissioners. My concern is the infrastructures in there that may be planned. There were infrastructures planned back in the past, it hasn't happened. The other project you have planned on would increase the traffic there as well. There are no, it's hard enough getting out on Jackson as it is. We moved into the area because of the buffer zone there, and the increase in traffic and community there is more than likely going to increase the crime rate that's already in the area due to problems there. So, that's a major concern, and it's gonna lower all of our real estate values in the area, because true Granite Hills is ten thousand and we're six. They have zoning on the other side, they don't wanna build on that's already zoned, and now they wanna do this, and there are enough lots in the area that are already zoned to R six, maybe on the other side of town, but closer to facilities that we don't have here. So, it's just gonna make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next individual is Thomas Hatchley. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing some of the names.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Are we just talking tonight about just this one project here of both of the proposed zoning changes?
We will hit, we will hit the other one later, after.
Later, okay.
You're only gonna do one at a time.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
He needs you to state your name.
Well, let me read you something that...
Excuse me, sir. Sir, could you please state your name?
My name's Thomas Hatchley.
Thank you.
I live at twenty-one thirty-one Horsemen Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We had some residents of our community write this letter, if you don't mind me reading this to you. The city of Kingman is considering zoning change to vacant land west of Canyon Bluffs subdivision, okay? This request change should effectively double the number of homes that could be built in the same place, okay? Thus resulting in a significant increase in local foot and vehicle traffic, decreased emergency response times, likely approval of similar nearby zoning changes, which we know, we all know, that if you change the zoning procedure for that property, all the rest will follow, just how it is. So, and a reduction in our home appraisal values due to the lower comp prices in the emulated area. And that's pretty much what we're concerned about. You know, us folks have bought nice homes, they were R ten zoning when we bought them, beautiful views. The views are going away. Contractors and developers are coming in, building new homes, and doing whatever they wanna do according to the zoning laws. So we're a bit concerned. We don't want our housing prices to go down for lower-income housing. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. We didn't buy these homes for that. We paid good money, we have very nice properties, and we don't want R six zoning. We don't want that. We don't want small crackerjack boxes, boom, 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 one after another. We don't want that. So on this particular item, that's pretty much all I gotta say except for one more thing. I'm a little concerned about the drainage area on this, because if you look at the detailed map, the drainage area goes all the way down to Slaughterhouse Gulch, okay? And so what are those folks that live one mile down Slaughterhouse Road gonna do when it rains? All of our water and all of their water is not gonna sink into the ground, it's gonna wash right down Slaughterhouse Road, and how are they gonna get out? If an emergency happens, they're not gonna get out. They're trapped. So that's my concern.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual we have is Susan Joy. Please state your name, ma'am.
Hello, Susan Joy, two-one-three-one Horsemen Avenue, as well. I just have a couple concerns. I wanted to go over this drainage area, 'cause we were looking at the bottom of this development, how it does drop, and we'd ride our Canams back there all the time. So, our last storm that we had, a pretty big one, those washes ran. We could barely get through on the Canam, going down Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, and then going, it would be below the development, and then going to, let's see, that'd be west. And there are a couple houses there. That road, right when you turn at the bottom of the tip of that, it was like wiped out. That's a county road, so that is a very big concern. Another thing is, I don't know, I just want, are these one-story houses that are going in, or are they two-story? I have no idea. Hopefully, not two-story. And I also agree, I mean, the zoning, I prefer it not to change from the R ten to, what is it, R six. Someone did mention R eight, I'm not familiar with that, I don't know what the square footage is on that.
That's an eight thousand.
It's eight thousand on up, which would, yeah, that'd be better, 'cause we're probably never gonna stop this. But anyway, that's all I really have to say. We do need a light if this comes in, we do need the light. Wherever you put it, whether it's on Jackson and Wallop High Road, or if you're thinking of going a little bit farther north over by, I think it's the, what road is that, over by the...
Adams.
Veterans? It's Adams? Okay, over by Adams, but something needs to be done there, for sure. I don't know if there's gonna be lighting out there. My daughter goes to school, and she's been out on that corner on Mission and Slaughterhouse Canyon Road by herself, and we're having problems in the area. I mean, we had a child almost abducted about a month ago where the police were called. She knows the people that are hanging. We're getting a lot of transits, transits, excuse me, coming up as well, so we're very concerned about that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Carla Register. Please state your name, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Carla Register. I live, I live at 2109 Horstman. My big concern is, we have a pair of either nesting hawks or eagles over in that whole area. Has there been any kind of an environmental study done, period, over there? That, that needs to be addressed, because I looked it up, and these are endangered and protected animals, these hawks and eagles are. So, I would like to see an environmental study done before they start digging into that. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual I have is Adriana Joy.
Hello.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name.
Adriana Joy. I live at 2131 Horstman Avenue, and I would just like to address where I feel way, at the stop sign at Slaughterhouse Mission, waiting for the bus stop, and I'm out there until like four, and I have to get up early for school. I just thought it would be a good idea to like put up lights out there, 'cause there's many transits up and down the road, and it's just, feels very unsafe. Great idea to put some lighting out there, just not for myself, but I'm sure for others as well, exactly, because I think it's the best thing to do, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention today, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next individual I have is Verlaine Tenell.
Verlaine Tenell, 2228 Rincon, and I was here a month ago expressing concern that if this is zoned R16, that that's gonna lead to even higher density, which apparently is on your agenda for later, when we have duplexes in the area. As I stated last month, and I don't wanna reiterate everything, but we do have a petition signed. We have a small area, probably about 30 houses. Tim probably is much more eloquent and can say a lot more than I can, so if I do have any seconds left after stuttering, I'll turn it over to him. But we have about 30 people in our neighborhood, and we have 28 signatures representing almost every house in the neighborhood saying that they're opposed to this. And it is the higher density that we're opposed to. We bought our, in our area specifically looking at ingress egress because of emergency vehicle response time. We looked at underground utilities, which we have. None of this is proposed for what we have, as Tim or maybe it was Rich said. This has been voted on since 2004, over and over and over. They want apartments next to us. They want R16. And as soon as we have R16, we have no buffer. And they're back in 2004, George Rips, who owns Granite Bluffs 2, was opposed to this, but now, all of a sudden, he's all in favor of it. Is there not enough R16 in the city available for purchase? We bought this knowing everything that was zoned all around us because of where we used to live and the changes that happened there. So, we did our homework, we searched, we searched, and this is exactly what we were looking for, and now, all around us, it's like, they want apartments, they want duplexes, they want R16, and it's drastically going to affect our home values, because when we purchased, we purchased with R110 and a certain square footage, and as you all know, all of the comps are based on what's selling around you, and if R16 is selling X to R110, it's definitely going to affect our, our values. And I would submit these to the recording secretary.
I have a question, ma'am. I have a question. Are you speaking for yourself and the 28 that are on that petition?
A, a lot of the 28 probably are here, and, you know, perhaps you just wanna hear a count of how many people have signed. I know that in the...
I just wanted to know if it was an addition to what we're...
A lot of them are not signed up to speak, I know that. And I know that Canyon Bluffs also has a similar petition. I don't know how many signatures they have.
Oh, wait a second.
Sandy will take that.
I, I had a statement, but you had mentioned George Rips, and he did drop off a statement saying that he was against it, so they have a lot of people here that you, you know, I just will let you know.
I, I believe at the last meeting in November, he was in support of this, although in 2004, he was opposed.
Okay, well, I'm just letting you know, he came in, came in and expressed his concern that he didn't, he felt that was a buffer zone.
Thank you.
The next individual I have is Barry Nelson.
My name is Barry Nelson. I live at 2112 Horstman Avenue. I have a petition for the Canyon Bluff residents with 42 names on it that are opposed to the zoning change from R10 to R6. Various reasons, you've probably heard most of them, or you will hear most of them. One that wasn't mentioned was the fact that that ground out there is all rock, so they're gonna have to be blasting, and I can't imagine what that'll do to the two subdivisions with blasting going on for months. They, they don't like the extra congestion, the traffic, the possibility for more crime out there, and you're, you're downgrading the area. You go from a 10 to a 6. I don't think Kingman needs to be downgrading areas. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you wanna turn your petition into...
Sandy?
Thank you, Terry.
The next individual I have is Dennis Anderson.
Actually, my request has nothing to do with...
Please state your name, sir.
My name is Dennis Anderson. I live at 928 Gates in Kingman, and what I have concerns about is not this, this project, so is it appropriate for me to still carry on here?
Yes, yes.
When I, when I talked to Richard, I had a concern, I'm a landscape architect...
Hold on one second, Rich.
Oh.
Yeah, the...
Is he talking about this one, or...
No, this, this is another item, this would be under the public comment section.
You can speak the next comment section on, on the veterans' housing, is that what you're referring to, sir?
No, it's, it's just a planning process that I'm concerned about, that it's...
For this development?
For, for anything that goes through the city. My concern is...
That would not be now.
That as a consultant, it should be changed.
Okay, you should've, we should've had, you should've spoke at, when it was open for, open mic for...
I was told I could come here. I just spoke to this gentleman here, he said, "Come here." So, I'm doing what I was told.
Okay, thank you, sir.
What do I do now?
No, there, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mr. Anderson, I did talk, speak with Mr. Anderson, and it was intended that he speak during the public comment period, but I, I don't know if his, if his request to speak form specified that or not.
Go ahead and finish, finish your comments, sir.
Well, the disappointment, disappointment that I have is, I've been hired as a landscape architect to do several projects in the city, and my clients pay me good money to do this, and they're very concerned about when, when the plans are done, that it gets done per the plan. And so, a couple times, I've noticed, especially on the U-Haul project, as I passed by, nothing was in there per my plan, just, when I just briefly looked at it. So, I asked Mr. Ruggles, and he said, "Well, the process with the city is that they, they count the plant material," and they, of course, they never said anything about the irrigation, "but they don't check whether it's the actual specific type of plant, tree, or whatever." And so, my concern is, I spent a lot of time with the client, making sure that we use the proper trees and shrubs that, that don't block the building, or, or it makes it better. So, my concern is that, in most cities that I've worked with, that the consultant has a chance at the end of the, the construction to, to actually review it, do an inspection, and see that it was actually done per plan. And that would include the type of trees, the shrubs, and even a, a coverage test for the irrigation. So, I'd like to see if that could be changed in the process.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have three other names up here, and I'm, and I believe they all go towards the next item, and we're gonna address on the RZ18-0007. Is there any further comments in the public that'd like to speak on this agenda item now? Please come forward, one at a time, and step up the microphone and state your name.
Sir, I believe my name was put, submitted, Clifton Oppenheimer, 0005.
Yeah, you have, you wrote down for the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I asked, I got the wrong zoning number, I apologize.
That's why I opened it up, just to make sure.
Thank you very much. Again, Clifton Oppenheimer, 2649 Diamondback Drive. I'd like to thank you for all the information you have here, it's very good. One thing about your plots there and rezoning, and most of those rezonings were done prior to neighbors moving in, so it was easy to rezone from R10 to R6 on, on those plots that they did do. And right now, though, you're rezoning R6 with people who have moved there for qualitative, you know, quality of life. They like the view, they enjoy the atmosphere, and they would, and I don't think anybody opposes R10, because we know that the amount of people you're bringing in is only half of the amount of people you're gonna bring in with, with 47 more housing units. And we don't see any green area in those housing units at all. So, what we're looking at is qualitative for them, like, that was what we looked at when we went there, again. And so, you're putting this in, you got one single road, obviously, and our traffic problems are true. And we have a little corner there on Walupi, just off Walupi at the, at the storage area that's never been repaired in the nine years I've been there. Essentially, been that way since then with the little spot, so there are concerns with what's gonna happen when you bring in all these other housing units, and the ability of the city to maintain them, since we just stopped the 1% tax, and one of the reasons you had that tax, obviously, was to maintain your infrastructure. So, you can't maintain your infrastructure, you dropped, dropped the Kingman Fire Department thing over there. So, I know you hear about it all the time, but we wanna maintain that quality of life, and R10 would do it for us, R6 would obviously take it down. We did live on, at, off of Eastern by there, when you first brought those units in, they're R6. They're powers up above ground cables, you seen the cables, look like third world countries, I apologize for that. Cables going back and across the street in every which way. We don't know what you're gonna do here. Is it gonna be underground or above-ground power? Okay, so all of that, we don't know anything about. And if you do R10 for us and maintain for us that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Please step forward.
I was also one of those that I wrote a little, but I'll just speak, I'll speak for the later one. My name is Matthew Helmke. My address is 2127 Horstman Avenue, and I spoke last time, I'm sure a lot of you remember. I pointed out the fact that Mission Road is not finished, it's half the width of what a road should be. When we have 447 more trips going through there, it's gonna become a traffic jam. I was almost in an accident today trying to make a left turn onto Walupi, where there's no street light, and the traffic was backed up, and it's just gonna get worse. There's, as you can see to the right there, those streets and all of those lots that are 6,000 square foot that are untouched yet. We don't need to put more 6,000 square foot lots in there next to it. There's a ton of them ready to be used. He's not even sure how many of them are there, but they are there. And why, once again, he has the same map of the same plots, but they're not the plots that they're gonna use, there's something like that. Why don't we wait until we have a direct answer from there of, "These are the lots that we wanna put in there," before we even talk to them? If they say, "This might be what we were gonna do, or maybe this is it," it's just, it's unacceptable, in my mind. And now, finally, the street light, the fact that there's no street light in Mission, and he brought it up, the fact that it's within a half mile of the railroad stoplight, and the city doesn't like to put them that close together. Well, without a stoplight there, there is no way for the kids to get to school. Luke back there, his mom has to give him a ride to school every day, because there's no way for him to cross Walupi. And now, if they say the railroad light is good enough, he's gotta walk all the way down the railroad and cross at that light, and then walk all the way back up to get to school, because there's no stoplight, and you wanna add more homes and more children. On top of that, he mentioned the trips for the, for that new rezoning. What about how many more homes are gonna be there for this second rezoning of the duplexes we're talking about putting in? I mean, why not combine the two of them? I mean, we're talking about, we're gonna add traffic here, and we're gonna add traffic there, we're just gonna keep adding traffic everywhere, and that's the problem. That, the children, and, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Should we have any further people would like to speak on this agenda item? Sir, please step up and state your name.
Yes, my name is Art Hammond. I live at 2106 Horstman. I also own the property at 2102 Horstman. Both of my properties are over 10,000 square feet. When my wife and I bought the property back in 2013, was understanding that there would be develop, developments potentially going in, but with the understanding that they were zoned, the R110, and they would be bigger lots. My wife and I have concerns, not only that, you know, why, why change it? You know, it's there. Why build more homes other than, you know, I understand the builder wants to make more money, so that's a good way to make more money, but leave it at the R110, let that go. The traffic is a problem already, and, you know, with the R16 zoning, and most of those lots appear to be closer to the 6,000 square foot size, and I doubt that there are many that come close to the size of parcels we have in our subdivision. So, my comments are, leave it as is. The developer can still put an adequate number of homes in there, and it will, in terms of the Granite subdivision, I don't know if it's Granite Bluffs or Granite Hills, whatever, you know, it'll have that buffer, and I say, I don't see any reason why a change should be made. We, the citizens, you know, are out, and we're making our points made, and we just want things to stay the same, and unless there's any compelling reasons that we have to have another 13, 14, 15, 20 homes, I don't, I don't think we need to make a zoning change to allow that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comments that'd like to speak on this matter? All right, I close, I close the open meeting, or open discussion at this time, or back up to commissions. Have any final, we do have, from KTH Consulting, would like to, it's, please, to address any of these people's concerns and point out, please state your name and...
Yep. Good evening, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent on this issue. And none of the facts materially have changed since last time. We are complying with the city's requirement. This request does comply with the city's general plan document. It is conformance, in conformance with that. It also has direct interface. I'm, I'm interested in all the public comment. It doesn't offend me, and this is part of the process, so I'm, I'm happy that we're here. But I am concerned that we have property owners over a quarter of a mile to the west who are already cocooned with probably 100 lots in between this project and their homes with R10 properties, so I feel like they're properly buffered anyways. But I do wanna address that, because I know in differing zones, you do wanna buffer. On the west line of this property, there is a 30-foot transwestern pipeline easement, which nothing can be built. We can't put a fence, there will be no adjoining fence line for people to look over the back. There will be a 30-foot open area. So, we're not, that is different than other areas. There's already a natural buffer. If the commission feels like a little increased zoning of an R18 along those lots would be appropriate, I do not believe it's necessary, but I certainly don't oppose it if that would, if there's a comfort level to doing that, just those lots along the west. When we talk about some of the other lots in varying size to the east side on the Canyon Bluff Estates... Bluff Estates, a lot of those are larger lots because they incorporate the slope that goes down. In our particular case, the layout, we just decided to keep that bottom acre open space. I could have arranged that layout so that I had very large lots for those bottom areas, so it would look like I had, you know, 12,000 square foot lots and stuff, when the fact is, a majority of it would be in that wash bottom. So we just chose a different route. The lots along the west side will be larger anyways because of the transwestern pipeline, and I did anticipate they would probably be about 7,500 square feet, so if they had to go up to 8,000, I think it's fine, he'll lose one or two lots, but he'll still be okay. The property to the north is also commercial. And when you have residential butted up to commercial, that's also unique, and a lot of people don't want to buy with their fence the same as commercial, so we want to get a little bit higher density, and in areas all over the city, that is commonplace. There is some R110 behind commercial, but a majority of it, I believe, is R16, because those are more complementary, that's how you do the planning, a commercial, a higher density, less density. So our request to go to R16, and Canyon Bluffs to the east has exactly that scenario. They have commercial to the north there, those orange blocks that were sent out, those are C2 HMR. Okay, it makes sense to do that. I am surprised by the comments from Canyon Bluffs, because it is the exact same zoning. That surprises me. This developer, we talked about, in 2004, they did make a request to rezone at R110. Canyon Bluffs was not approved at that time, it was denied, I saw that layout. That layout had lots backing driveways on Slaughterhouse Canyon, it did not make sense, I would have denied it myself. But, that was from Praise Chapel, not this same owner, although this owner apparently got it right after. So this is the first time that he's made a request to rezone this property, but it's the same as the development that it, that it has interface with. On Granite Bluffs, there is no road network, the individuals in Granite Bluffs will never drive by or use any of the roads in this subdivision, never. They don't share infrastructure, the water and sewer, the sharing of the roadway and access is with Canyon Bluffs, which is the exact same zone of R16. We want to be a good neighbor, I mean, the owner does, he's owned the property 14 years or something. You know, Canyon Bluffs and everything from this property all the way down to Copper Ridge, I think is already R16. This is not an unusual request. You know, we're not trying to be nasty, let me go through some of the other things. So we already have a natural buffer, but if you require an R18 along the west side, I think that's fine. The letter that the property owners in Canyon Bluff Estates have indicating that it would double the size for the rezone is not true at all. We'll end up with maybe seven to 12 lots extra if this gets done, if we go to R18, maybe eight or nine lots. I mean, it's not a huge difference, but we do want to maximize it because it has commercial abutting it. The drainage study someone brought out, this particular site actually drains to the north and to the south. As part of the subdivision development, we will have to do a drainage study, and it will not be allowed that everyone downstream will get flooded out. That's what the city takes care of, and, and whatever has to be taken care of will be done. The same with the transportation. I understand the concerns with the transportation, or what these people indicate they deal with every day, it's not the goal to add to it. But this area will continue to develop, and so with each development comes in, each person, each development adds a little bit more to take care of that issue. In this case, you've required a traffic impact analysis, which we will have to do upfront, and see what that impact is, and anything it says that this project adversely impacts, we have to fix. So, whatever that is, it's done by a professional, the city reviews it and concur, so it's not, the developer doesn't have a choice in that. Let's see. I was just, was there anything else that, we certainly agree with the staff recommendations, nothing has changed materially since our last time. I'm hoping that I can still get your support so we can send this back to council. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think you might have answered a lot of questions, if you guys are open with changing some of the lots to R8 on the west side there, that probably addresses all the people's concerns.
Okay, that would be fine, and then, like I said, we still have the physical 30-foot buffer difference, and they still have a quarter mile or 100 lots of...
So the, looking at the map up there, the west side is where the 30-foot drainage?
It's a transwestern pipeline easement that goes along there. And there's also, yeah, there's a drainage and public utility easement that goes out to Jackson as well. So the drainage on this side will go to the north, and I just proposed a public utility and drainage easement to go that way, and then also comes out the south. But see that transpipeline easement on the west, that, nothing can be built in there, so that's 30-foot physical buffer.
But there, there is, there will be block walls abutting up...
They can be up to them, but they cannot go within.
Yeah, right, right.
So, no matter what.
Right.
There'll be that separation.
Right. Any further?
On the utilities, are they above ground or are they in-ground utilities?
Whatever the city requires, and I think in, in interior lot subdivisions, underground, yeah, absolutely.
It's all under.
And we still have to go to Municipal Utilities Commission for water service and stuff to get those approvals. But everything will be done with city requirements, there's nothing unique in terms of design.
So, I have a question, so the point of the rezone, is so you can get a few more houses in there?
It's to get, yeah, it's to get a little bit more dense, especially on that top line. This, the area to the east is also R16, so if the idea is, if an R110 next to an R16 devalues that property, I don't know why we wouldn't keep those the same. I don't believe that it devalues anything, but he would like to make it the same as what he interfaces with, R16.
Right, but it's, it's, I guess my concern is, it's an R10 now.
It's an R10.
And you want to get six more lots and make...
About 10 or so, maybe, yeah.
10 more lots, and you had mentioned being a good neighbor, I, I don't think you're going to have a lot of good neighbors. I mean, to me, it makes more, to me, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying that, for six more, I was trying to get the gist of it, just trying to get six more lots in there, and, so, I thought there was maybe more reasoning behind it.
Let's just say about 10 more is what, what I think it would be.
Or 10 more lots, okay.
Right, but it's not a lot, I get that point. But the point is, is that this interface is with an R16 across the way, and when you look down Diamondback, all you see are rows of houses.
Right, but it's...
Strictly, it's like that, so it would be the same on this side, and then it breaks off. That is, it's not the same in Diamondback, but when you look at both sides of that street, it will be the same. It will not be the same if that is R110.
And that's...
So the goal is to make it the same with the subdivision that it, that it interfaces with.
In my understanding, that's, that's only a preliminary, I think as was stated in, in the plots, could change?
Well, ideally, we look at what it might look like. We know no matter what, we're going to have Diamondback there, and we know it has to be a loop. So if I wanted to make larger lots on the bottom to maybe closely align what Canyon Bluffs did by making them larger lots, there's really no reason to, though, I mean, I've still got to come out the bottom somewhere.
Right, right.
So, I think the layout works for this site, you know, something close to that, a cul-de-sac in the middle, a loop road and a cul-de-sac, that's what it'll be.
Thank you.
That's not drainage, that's traffic.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, you had your chance to speak and now she, she's...
She should have spoken, sir.
I'm going to keep order in here, please.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions?
Yeah, so have you already scheduled the traffic study?
No, as soon as the rezone gets done, then they would go to the Municipal Utilities Commission hearing, make sure that water would be served to the site, and then start the preliminary plat, traffic studies, and final plats, and all that would probably take from 12 to 15 months.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I wasn't being disrespectful, I was just, I was just trying to get the understanding, that's all, that's all.
Right, and I just wanted to make clear that we want to be even on both sides. So, this private property owner has a right to develop his property in a functional, efficient, fair way, and we believe this is exactly what we're presenting, we are presenting, a functional, fair, predictable way of building which matches the area to the east and is not different.
How many acres is the development to the east compared to yours?
I don't know, there's a couple of phases, but probably 40 acres or something, I don't know.
So the part that's already developed is about the same size as what this proposed?
I think it's a little bit larger, I think it's like 15 acres, but Rich does have that.
So the area directly to the west of the site, which is Grand Bluffs 2, it's 32 acres, 88 lots. And the, and I do have an answer for Chairman Fredrickson's question earlier, for the Canyon Bluffs Estates area that is undeveloped to the east, it's 97 lots, and 17 of the 97 lots are 6,000 square feet, the rest are a little bit above that, you know, in the 6,000 to 10,000 square foot range.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
I do have a question for staff or probably engineering. At what point in time is somebody going to address the traffic signal on either Jackson or...
They've already addressed that.
Adams and Mission Boulevard in that area, what's, what's going on there?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name's Mike Pryor, I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Right now, as you know, there's, the additional tax has voted down, so city is strapped for cash to do some of these improvements. So I think what's going to be important to drive the needs for these signals is these traffic impact analysis as each development occur in this area. Particularly for this development, I think there are some options that that traffic impact analysis can look at in lieu of a traffic signal. I think one of the better option would be to consider paving Mission Boulevard, that, that gap where it's unpaved right now, to provide good access to the existing light at Railroad and Wallaby Mountain Road.
Right now, I don't know if any kind of project, you know, signals on Wallaby Mountain Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to express that I have a little bit of concern, you know, we've got this project wanting to be, wanting to be rezoned, and we have another project on our agenda tonight that's in the same vicinity with the more housing. It's also going to impact that same area. It's going to impact Mission, Jackson, I mean, I think we need to take, rather than dividing this one and the other one, I think we need to look at it as a whole and see, how is it going to impact the traffic? It's already bad on Wallaby Mountain Road, and then we add this subdevelopment and another one. It's like, and the traffic study, it gets done after the zoning approval, which still takes 15 months. I think it's something that we need to consider.
Well, I can say that, you know, I, I am pro-development for sure. One of the things, some of the things that we have, we're questioned here is, is there a need? There is a need, but I don't feel that it, there's a need to go from R10 to an R16. Is it suitable? Not according to your residents that are surrounded, but is it detrimental? We've heard situations here today that they, you know, that it's possibly can be, and does it conform to the general plan? Yes, but many things are permissible, but not always the best plan. I'm like, the, I just think that it's a big decision that will impact and hurt, possibly, you know, have an emotional, huge impact for this kind of decision. So I'm not for it at this time.
And to my calculations, I'm thinking about 36 are opposed to this rezone.
36 what?
36 people are opposed with 42, so we've got the 36 and then 42.
Total of 42.
Well, some of those names are probably the same. But...
I would say that I'm going to have to go with the community on those. And I think last time when we made a vote to vote it in for a sixth, to change the zone to an R16, I'm really thinking that it wasn't posted correctly, and it didn't get out to the public. Now that I'm hearing the public response, I'm going to have to go with the majority.
Thank you.
I think that if the city had the resources to properly assure the current resident's safety, as well as the future resident's safety, I think that it might not be a problem to go on with development. It seems like at this time, the city does not have the resources to go through and, and make the project safe enough for the current residents, and it would actually jeopardize a lot of people, and so I would also have to vote no.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that no rezone, keep it at R110 until the city has the resources to put in the proper traffic as far as lights, have some more control over that condensed community. And that is my motion.
I would second that.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
I do have a question, so far as density is concerned, if you went from R10 to R8, what are you looking at in lot differential?
I haven't looked at it yet. I think it's 10 lots or something.
Yeah, I looked at it and it's about 10 lots, is what I have.
Okay, that's, thank you.
We already had your open, we already had the open period, thank you. I have a motion and I have a second. Any, any further discussion?
Oh, I do want to say one thing.
Can you clarify that for me, would you please? That your motion is no rezone or no development?
No rezone at this time, just keep it at the R10. No rezone at this time. Just keep it at the R-10.
So if somebody came in with R-10 and wanted to develop it at its R-10, there's no caveat that says that they can't do it?
Well, it's already at an R-10, so there would, it would still stay at like no change. Leave as is. Yes.
Today if they want it.
Yes.
And before we, oh, I wanted to, you asked me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have, I have a concern there because if we already have R-10 as it is now, we already having the school issues, the traffic light issues, nothing's, nothing that we do here today is going to address that issue right now. So in a month, if they were to come back and say, I want to do this R-110, this isn't getting addressed, all these issues till the traffic study is done, all these studies are done after the fact. So.
It's already an R-10.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn there because of the general plan that's, that is put forth by the commission and worked on extensively, that's a susceptible area. The problem is with the city and I, and I, my, my kind of laugh is on total agreement that I think we, my personal opinion, we made a mistake with losing that 1% sales tax because things like this, in a development that is already established, we have issues. And this is only one example in this city. I'm sorry, I'm only one vote is, you know, whether you agree with it or not. But I, I think that was a mistake, but we can't address that here. So a lot of these things, I think, it has to do with the development there and the city's lack of being able to do anything. And will this get addressed even, even if we left it at R-110? And I don't know that it will get addressed. So. I mean, are we, are we better off just putting this on hold till we?
So, okay, so are you saying that?
Why would we put it on hold? It's already an R-10.
Are you saying that we should put maybe any further development until the city can review, like the traffic lights?
We would have to review it anyway, right? If another developer wanted to come in.
Well, we can request it of the development to go and do a traffic study, you know, make it part of it, you know. But again, these properties are open for development and we're coming right back to the same scenario that we don't have the control over the traffic. It's, I mean, it's really getting bad and really congested in that area.
One, one option that may be some consideration is in the past, the city have coordinated with the developer through a development agreement to do some improvements that are outside of their normal requirements. So a traffic signal may be something that may qualify. And I know today there's two rezones in this same general vicinity that will most likely impact traffic in this area. So that might be something in consideration to, you know, first look at the traffic impact analysis and then look at some sort of a development agreement to do some of these improvements.
So could we request that it go in a different order? That we see a traffic analysis before we make a decision?
Can that, can that be requested, Richard, or?
I'm sorry, do you have to repeat that part again?
Could we request a traffic study prior to a rezone?
Well, normally the commission makes a recommendation that a traffic impact analysis take place as the result of some change, like for example, the rezoning would be possible, something that would trigger that. I don't know how you could make the, require it before you do a, you know, take a rezoning action. It's usually, it's a trigger because otherwise you're, you're putting potential burden on the developer and they're not even doing anything with the property, so.
Right. Well, can we make a text amendment? That any new developments coming in in that area that require road improvements, traffic signals, some sort of traffic, you know, more controlled lighting?
Well, currently we have those types of requirements. There are traffic impact analysis that are required currently within our street policy. And there are certain levels of which, and Mike is probably the better, can explain it a little bit better than I can, but there are different levels at which you have to perform different levels of studies depending on the number of lots and the, you know, the typical expected traffic within a certain area. So we already have those requirements. We have the requirements for the street improvements, things like that, so.
And they already have their requirements and the people already bought the property based on the requirements. So you would have to go with what they have now. So are we going to make a motion?
We're still discussing in the.
Well, I made a motion. There's a motion on the table.
Motion's still on the table.
Are you calling for the question or we'll have some discussion?
What do you have to say?
I want to know approximately, you have a count for, for the area. What, did you say it was mostly R-110 lots now?
The, let me, let me turn up the map. So Canyon Bluffs, I'm sorry, the Grand Bluffs, she's essentially built out of this. There are eighty-eight lots with the Grand Bluffs Two, which is the R-110 section. And there's something like twenty-six lots in Grand Bluffs Three. And there is ninety-seven lots, which are the R-16 zones here. Canyon Bluffs is also mostly built out at this point.
And the Canyon Bluffs is R-16.
This is R-16 and this is R-16, correct. Ninety-seven lots are.
Right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, so what about putting a requirement on the builder? Putting an option that?
There is a requirement on the builder if, if the traffic study reveals that.
Well, it sounded like the traffic study wasn't going to put lights that close together from Rich's regardless of.
Well, it says they don't like to. It doesn't say you can't.
If they don't like to, it's not very promising.
The city prefers, as opposed to the city says.
But the city does the traffic study, right?
No, actually, usually it's a disinterested third party, depending on what.
Because I guess it's, it's not that I'm against development, just like Charmaine said earlier. I, my biggest concern is the, the safety and the roads.
I'm all for development, just as long as it's being done, that it's, the progression is going in all the directions of the development. You know, and, and I don't want to put, you know, the cart before the horse and have all these houses here and have all of this, you know, traffic. We've got school buses, we've got children, you know, no lighting and stuff. And so I think we need to look, like I said, at the whole picture, you know, as far, because, you know, Kingman's going to grow, you know. And I'm for growth, but I want to make sure that it's being done correctly and that.
I agree. And I almost wonder if since the 1% tax, you know, like you said, was voted out, if we need to come up with some safety measures because I'm uncomfortable saying yes to things that I know the city can't afford to implement. And that puts us in a really awkward position of having to vote on something that we don't know whether it actually is a good idea or not.
That's, that's the problem.
You know, if we had the money to do it, it would be a different story because if we voted on it, we know that it would happen and it would work. But I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with voting on something that I'm uncertain is going to actually turn out properly.
A traffic impact analysis is required at the time of plan submittal. But there's nothing in our regs that, you know, prevent the property owner from submitting that prior to that step. So what I've heard tonight was that you're wanting to, you know, have the timing on that submittal different. And like I said, it's required at submittal, but it's not required at the preliminary plat stage or the rezoning stage. So that might be something that the property owner, you know, could do ahead of time at, at their.
Well, I, I think, I think before us, because I know many of the people in the audience are going to speak on item five. So I, I think we're in a quondrum here. And we, we listened to everybody, what you're saying, and I think most of your really major concerns are, is safety, lights, for, for the kids, signals. I think probably most of us up here, even though we, we have motion and we're in a discussion right now, is, I think both of our concern is both in that area. Because I know all of us have driven over there and the roads are deplorable. I don't, I can't put it said any other way. And it, and it's sad, but not to fault any of you that are already there, but I think you already know too. And it's probably deteriorated since you guys have purchased over there, unfortunately. And I don't think anybody expects the city to allow that to happen, but it, it has. And I think we all, we all fall on our roads, but I, I think we're in a quondrum here. What's our best solution with both items on the agenda? Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. You've already, we already had the open.
Just, please hold your comments.
Essentially, if you initiate what you suggest, it's going to just stop any development in that area for a time being. Granted that this development and the proposed item five should go hand in hand because essentially they both impact the area. They both need equal attention, both need a traffic study. I don't know that we can initiate a development agreement where these two proposals share the cost of a light at Jackson or a light at Adams. But short of that, there will be no development there.
There's going to be development. It's just not going to be as dense. There's going to be development. It's just not going to be as dense.
If somebody pays for the infrastructure, sure.
It's just ten lots.
Yeah.
It's going to happen.
Yeah. It's already zoned.
And I don't feel that it's the same thing because you have two different, completely different things. You have one that's a necessity and one that is a want. One's a need, one's a want. One's a need for veterans that are homeless or, you know, and there's a need versus a want. Want ten more, ten more lots is different. So there is, I feel, different concerns there. But ten more lots, they're still going to develop that property. You wouldn't just let it sit and do nothing and pay taxes. Most people. I know it's ten, it is ten lots.
Well, and I guess my other concern is like what you were saying, if we propose that they do traffic studies before, the lots are just going to end up sitting. Is that what you were saying?
The only interest that has been shown in development in this area lately has been for a smaller lot size. Eight thousand feet, six thousand feet, ten thousand apparently isn't what anybody is looking for there in this location. Six to eight thousand feet would be more marketable, apparently. So what I'm saying, I guess, is even though it's going to go, they, Grand Bluffs people don't want it because they feel that there's going to be an increase in crime and all that traffic, which I don't really believe that, but everybody's entitled to an opinion. If, if, if you don't downzone it, I think it's going to curtail the development for a while. How long that is, I can't say.
Do you think we can safely downzone it?
I think you can go to eight thousand square feet and not have an impact on anybody. There's thousands of six thousand square feet lots in King. I don't know that there's that many available in eight thousand feet. I don't, I don't know the answer.
Well, the difference is one, those were already zoned. These are asking for a change. Well, I just said that the difference is that they're already zoned like that. This is asking for a change of people that are already there. And, and they, they feel that it is more than just the density. It's the impact on the safety and the, you know, the, it's beyond, for them, it's beyond that. For the, for the, I love building and development. I think it's a beautiful thing. But I do also understand that it's more than just ten extra lots to them. It's the value of their homes, it's the safety, it's the traffic. You don't need to do a traffic study. I mean, you do, but we already got it. We've already been told.
We all know that.
You know, it's already an impact and we already know that the city doesn't have the money. Bottom line is, doesn't have the money, period. And it's not going to necessarily change anytime in the future because we don't have the extra 1%, you know, to help us. I'm just saying that, so the bottom line is that at this time, it is, our, our focuses are here is suitability, is it detrimental? Does it conform to general plan and is there a need? So that's the things we're supposed to be asking ourselves. And it isn't. Don't, there's not a need for an extra ten lots. And it's not suitable, according to the people that have bought based on the buffer and the general plan that was already presented there. And now last time we had the discussions, nobody was here. You know, we made our decision based on nobody opposing. And now that we've heard that these items are very, is what we're supposed to be looking at and they've been presented to us, they're going, you're trying to get a rezone. And that's, they're coming to us about what's already here. All they want is to not make the change. They want the development. They want to be appreciative of the development in a proper growth. And so I think that that's been presented.
All righty, we have a motion and we have a second.
I would like to add one more comment, you know, after hearing the whole planning zoning commission. I just want to say for the record that not only do we need to review this project, the next one on the agenda, because it's in the same area, it's going to be the same issues. And they're asking to change the zone to multiple family. And so, and, but it's also too a different kind of a development. And so, and, but it's also too a different kind of a development. So, and it's going to have the same impact as far as traffic, as far as safety, lighting. That's what I heard tonight. What I heard is congestion, traffic, crime, drainage, lighting in that area. So I think these are all concerns and I'm, you know, and with both of these projects being put on our agenda, I actually think it's a plus because it gives us the opportunity to look at it as a whole rather than breaking it down because it's going to impact that whole area. And I've got a question for actually the city. So the city is aware that they do not have the funding for additional traffic lights or anything because of that 1% sales tax. So since we have two projects coming up and they're almost side by side using same roadways and they're only just a block or so apart, could we put on there as a recommendation that they do traffic improvements along with improving that project? I mean, is that a possibility at all?
Well, I don't really want to jump ahead to the next item because we're not there yet, but.
All right, let's stay with this one. Is that a possibility that we can have a joint effort?
I mean, I think there could certainly be a general traffic impact analysis that looks at both projects if both projects are moving forward, you know, and that would be something possibly that could be worked out between the, the two applicants. I guess something to add.
It sounds to me like this is an existing problem. There's another option to get these improvements done. We have a process for an improvement district where if the residents are concerned about, you know, traffic and pedestrian crossing of Walupi Mountain, they can put together a petition to ask for the city to look into that and we would evaluate, you know, improvements in this area. But most likely, you know, but these improvements will be spread out between the, the property owners, so they'll, they'll be actually paying for the cost.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm understanding you and, and hopefully everybody here will understand. So you're saying that the property owners and the parties that are all concerned about this development and our next development on the agenda, to put together a petition and have it looked at for, 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 you know, further improvements? Is that what, what you're saying?
That's, that's correct. The, the process for an improvement district is very time consuming, so I imagine it won't fit the time span for these projects, but there's a process that we have to follow through with these improvement districts and the cost of it will be distributed through the, all the property owners based upon their impact. So it'll be spread out by.
It would work.
Yeah, but.
See, essentially it's a tax, they're taxing.
It's, it's money, it boils down to.
My bad is you won't get that participation among this group.
Right. They don't want you paying anymore.
I just wanted to put it, put it out there so everybody knows their options. Okay, well then.
Oh, I haven't.
Want to table? I'm going to withdraw my motion and I'm going to make a new motion for us to table this until we hear about the next item that's on the agenda.
And what's?
The next item on the agenda is number five. It, it's a rezone as well.
Then we'll just have to revisit it again and it's easier to make a decision now, either approve it or don't and let people get on with their lives.
I agree.
Have a motion? I need a motion?
I am, how do I say that? Make a motion that we keep the zoning as it is, R110.
So my orig- original motion? Yeah, so the original motion.
She withdrew it, so she's re, motion.
Yeah, so I make a motion. I make a motion that we keep it as it, or the zoning as it already is, R110.
To deny it.
To deny it.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Deny.
Deny. Commissioner Goss?
Deny.
Commissioner Keith?
Deny, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McCoy?
Reluctantly deny.
Commissioner Shores is deny.
Deny.
Yeah, five to zero, the motion carries.
Thank you. New Business 5A, RZ18-0007, a request from Adams Construction and Management Company Incorporated, applicant in the NCC of North America, property owner for the rezoning of certain property from R110, residential single-family 10,000 square foot lot minimum to C2 HMR, Walupi Mountain Road, Overly District. Rezoning is requested to allow the development of 49 residential units comprising 25 duplexes for occupancy by veterans. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Mission Boulevard and Jackson Street and is 5.03 acres. The property is further described as a portion of government lot eight in the northwest quarter section of 19, T21N, R16W of the G and SRM Mojave County, Arizona. Sylvia?
Good evening. Just waiting for it to settle a little bit. I do, I brought one right here for you. Yes, thank you. Let me know if you can't hear me, though.
What?
All right, that was good. Okay.
Before we go any further, I'd like to welcome Deanna.
Deanna, thank you.
Deanna.
Sorry, the budget meeting went a little longer than.
Understandable. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Okay, well, I've got to get on the right PowerPoint. That one's not mine. Here's a five minus seven, okay. Okay, here we go. So the applicant is Gregory Wagner, president of Adams Construction and Management Company, and they're here tonight. The property owner is Reconciliation Catholic Church. The requested action is to rezone from R110 to C2 HMR. The rezoning is requested to allow the development of 49 residential units comprising of 24 duplexes for occupancy by veterans and one onsite manager's quarters. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Mission Boulevard and Jackson Street and is five, about five acres. Here's the aerial, and this is a vicinity shot of where the project is proposed, and this is the five acres, which is actually a portion of a larger parcel here. The VA clinics over in this area off of Mission. And then here's a closer photo of the project along with a conceptual plan of what is proposed. So the total parcel that this is a part of is eight acres, but the portion of the rezone is for five. The conceptual plan shows 24 duplexes, which is 49 units total. There is one onsite manager's quarters, which makes it the 49. There is an area for a pool, a community room, right here is a little retention pond and I believe that was like pickleball over there. The Adams Construction Company has several other projects and they can come up and probably tell you more about them after I present. Here's one of them that they had in the Bullhead City area, which you may know, Catherine Heights, Town Homes and Vias. There's also another one in Apache Junction, and this is pretty much how the homes come out and they still look today, actually. It went by probably a month ago and they look just like this. The general plan land use map shows the area of the rezone to be community commercial, so that is fitting for the rezone to C2 HMR. The zoning map is currently showing the property as R110 and all around it is C2 HMR, as you can see. So this is about one of the remaining properties that weren't rezoned to C2 HMR. This property was originally incorporated in 1952. The property was zoned R110 when the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1971. This property is included in the Walupi Mountain Road area plan that was adopted in 1988 and this plan is now referred to as Walupi Mountain Overlay District. There is no record of any previous development on the site. This is a picture of the Walupi Road Overlay District, which shows where this property is landing, right here. The Wal, the Overlay District specifies certain uses allowed and requires certain architectural design of the buildings, which this proposal complies to. This is where the utilities and water and sewer are. Down here is where we have one of the sewage lines and then there's water purple that's going along Mission, or Jackson Street. This isn't a flood zone X, anyway, which is outside the 500-year floodplain. For the transportation, the subject site may be accessed from Walupi Mountain Road and Jackson Street. The right-of-way widths for Jackson Street are 70, Mission Boulevard 84, and east of the site is 42 feet adjacent to the site. Jackson Street is partially paved with curb gutter and has sidewalk only on a portion of the east side of Jackson Street. Mission Boulevard is unimproved adjacent to the site, is, it is fully improved to the east of Jackson Street. A 42-foot wide portion of Mission Boulevard along the south border of the subject property will need to be dedicated to the city of Kingman prior to development of this site. And upon completion of this project, Mission Boulevard and Jackson Street will be paved, have curb, gutter and sidewalk on the portion adjacent to the subject property. Just going back one slide, that would mean Mission Boulevard all along this site would be dedicated and the property owner of the adjacent portion has already discussed dedicating the other portion already. The developers are responsible for this portion in front of their property to be improved at this point with their development. For public notification, the site was posted on December 19th. Public notices were published in the minor on December 23rd. Surrounding property owners within 300 feet were sent a notice, first-class mail on December 18th, and the list of property owners was generated using the Mojave County Assessor's One adjacent property owner came by the office to discuss the project and his main concern was about traffic and drainage, he did not object to the project. Another adjacent property owner submitted a letter of support. Both of these property owners were within the 300-foot notification.
Excuse me, Sylvia. Can I have, please, quiet in the audience, this is a small area and it's hard for everybody to hear and understand what our planning and zoning commissioner is saying, so please keep it down. Thank you. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Another property owner did come in that was outside of the notification area and submitted an email with various questions about the veterans' project, did not object to the project in the email, and the applicant has been responding to his questions and all the emails and questions are in your packets. A letter of support was received from the Department of Veterans Affairs and the Mojave County Community Services Department. This is the 300-foot notification, which I actually went greater than the area because I went ahead and took the whole eight-acre parcel and did a 300-foot, so these would be the property owners that were notified. And then here's the zoning notice over here. We did have some comments from engineering, the applicant will need to dedicate the 42-foot right-of-way on Mission Boulevard prior to development. A drainage report will need to be submitted at the time of development. A traffic impact analysis will not be required due to the number of trip generations anticipated by this project being under 200 trips per day. So this applicant already did submit a straight, a traffic statement and engineering has reviewed Analysis and summary, the applicant has submitted a conceptual site plan showing the 24 duplexes, 48 units for veterans and to rent and one unit for an onsite manager. As you know, the request is to change the zoning from R110 to C2 HMR to allow for these duplexes. C2 HMR allows for multiple family residential projects, not greater than 19 units per acre. This project density will be 10 units per acre. The general plan land use designation is community commercial and this lot is within the Walupi Mountain Overlay District. The applicant has agreed to meet the architectural styles required by this district and it's allowed use in the district. There are only a few parts, more parcels in the Walupi Mountain Overlay District that remain R110. Most are already zoned C2 HMR and C2 HMR is a suitable zone for this area and I'm talking about this project site. A full site plan review will occur at the building permit stage of processing, which will include a more detailed review of drainage and traffic. Water and sewer services will be required for this development. Although we have already met with this applicant and they've turned in quite a bit more than we usually get at this stage of processing, so they're a bit ahead of the game. The applicant will have to dedicate a 42-foot, 42-foot right-of-way for Mission Boulevard prior to development of the site. The staff is recommending approval of the rezoning of the subject site with the condition that the applicant needs to dedicate a 42-foot wide right-of-way for Mission Boulevard prior to development. And as, as I mentioned, the applicant is here and probably would like to speak on their item, and I have one of their company resumes here that they can show you briefly as well.
Any question to Sylvia?
Maybe you'd like to hear from the applicant first and I'll stay, I'll stay available.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Would the applicant like to step forward and?
Come up here, break your hands. I did bring, I did bring this, your updated resume, probably go through really quick to show them the projects you have. Oh, there you go. Yeah, you just, for you to tell us about yourself.
I got the resume.
I can get it. Email to you. That should do it better. Sorry. Okay. You can at least show them some of your projects.
So you, will you scroll through maybe?
Sure.
My name's Greg Wagner. If we develop this project, this will be our 22nd project of this type that we've developed in the last 15 years. And the reason I brought these pictures is because we take great pride in what we develop. We have not sold one project that we've developed in those last years of those 21 projects. We own them, we operate them, we manage them, we take care of all interior, interior maintenance, exterior maintenance, grounds maintenance, everything. And this project here, can't see that far. Hurricane Hills, so that was built, do the math, 20, almost 23 years ago, and this is what it looks like. This project here, Riviera Palms, is a similar project. Now, if you go back, actually, so the top one there is another picture of Hurricane Hills. This is exactly what the unit would look like, except for we've updated the exteriors to tile roofs, more contemporary colors, stucco and so forth. But we do a great job of our landscaping, we want to be a positive contribution to the community and maybe you can just scroll through some of those other pictures. This is one of the clubhouses we have at Pine Valley Town Homes. Picture of the pool there. I can't read that.
Well, it's really tall. Here's Red Cliff Manor.
Red Cliff Manor, this is a senior property that we did back in 90, 98, so that's 21 years old.
Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge.
And basically there's several others in here. There's Catherine Heights again, where I grabbed a picture from. Apache Junction, then that's the end. Then that's the end. Mainly, maybe you can tell them what the projects are.
Okay, and you know, a lot of times when we come to a community for the first time, obviously, we have a lot of concern. You hear about developers, well, they come in and promise this, but then they get approval, they do something else. Without exception, in every community that we've ever developed in, they welcomed us back. Many times, they've asked us to come back and build subsequent projects because we do such a good job, because we maintain the properties well. We do thorough background checks. We have a list of rules, two pages long. We enforce the rules. We evict people. Last year of over 1,000 units, we had of the total days available, so that'd be 365,000 rental days. We had less than one-third of 1% vacancy in those units, and that's Utah, Arizona. The way we can do that, we've got huge waiting lists because we maintain the properties. We don't allow a lot of garbage that goes on at other locations. Just going over some of the comments that were made about crime. I can tell you, we've got letters, we can get more letters from police departments, from cities, that keep inviting us back because we don't have crime issues. As far as lighting, I don't recall what the city will require, but we've agreed that we will put lighting on the exterior of Mission and Jackson Streets, so there will be adequate Let's see. Congestion and traffic, so we had our, we thought ahead and asked our engineer to do a traffic analysis, following the federal guidelines and the guidelines of the city. And there are only, well, I got right here. You can either look at it as a townhome project or an apartment project. So a townhome project would generate 26 peak hour trips. An apartment rate would generate 30 peak hour trips. These are two-bedroom, one-bath, one-car garage units. In working with the county and the Veterans Administration, they anticipate that 60% of the units will be occupied by a single individual. The remaining units will be occupied by a couple, possibly a couple with one child. But there's very, you can't really compare this to a regular apartment project. There's going to be a lot fewer, a lot fewer trips. So I've talked about congestion, traffic, crime, drainage. We've addressed the drainage. You can see in the top upper left-hand corner, we've got a drainage retention pond that will hold the water, the additional water that is generated by this development. I don't know, I don't want to put my mic on this spot, but does anybody have an idea what would a traffic light cost? Is there that popular ballpark?
The last traffic light that was constructed by the city was, a full four-way was at Railroad and Walupi Mountain, and that was done in 2009, and it costed $160,000. I figure if you look at what the cost would be for today's dollars, you're probably looking somewhere between $200,000 to $250,000.
Okay. As I talked with my partner here, we'd even be willing to look at paying for our share of that traffic light. We realize that you wouldn't have the total cost upfront, but if we said, hey, we'll take 1% of the total cost of this project and contribute it to a traffic light that can be spent down the road, that'd be somewhere between probably $100,000 and $120,000. We'd cover our share. Although that traffic light, as we looked at in prior slides, will probably serve hundreds and hundreds of units. We'd be effectively paying for half of it.
Great.
Let me just look here. I think that's probably all I have, unless you have some questions, and I hope I could respond to any other comments that come up after I'm done.
You answered a question I was going to propose about the traffic light, so you...
I have a question. On your traffic study here, how didn't you come up with those figures?
You know, I'm not an engineer. I know that he, our engineer, followed, and I don't know if that's part of your materials or not, but he followed the guidelines of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which publishes a manual for generating peak trips. It's a national guide, I guess.
And I have a question. Is this income-based?
Okay, yes, it is. However, the, I guess you ought to ask, maybe get more specific about what your concerns are or your question, because just generally saying income-based can mean a lot of...
Well, because we're talking about necessity, and we do have veterans that can't afford to live on their own with what they're getting. So I was just wondering, you know, we have so much available to other people. Is it income-based where the government might be? I looked at who would be involved, and it did have some government agencies, so I was wondering, is it subsidized? Would it be possibly?
So the, you've probably heard of Section 8 housing. This is Section 42 housing, where the government, through the sale, we compete for tax credits. I don't want to get too complicated here, but the state receives an allocation of tax credits based on the population of the state. We compete for those tax credits. They're awarded to us, and then we go out and sell them to banks and other entities. So that provides anywhere from 60% to 80% of the funds to build the project. The remaining 20% to 30%, we get debt on. The veterans that would live here can only pay up to 30% of their income towards rent, which I should say the rent on these will probably be half. I haven't looked at the surrounding rents yet, but generally, we're 50% or less than the market rents of any area. They'll pay up to 30% of their income, and then the remainder, we've applied through the county for some veterans assistance vouchers, which would cover the remainder of the rent above their portion that's paid. Sorry, that was complicated.
No, I get it. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
Sylvia, thank you.
I wanted to make one more clarification.
Can I stay here?
No, you're fine. Yeah. So the one clarification I did want to make was that this is a, this would be reviewed as a site plan, not a subdivision. So I just want to clarify, even though there's several duplexes, if the applicant weren't to take this particular property, this property is right next door, there's C2 HMR, would have just came in as a building permit site plan. So it's a little different process because we're going through the rezone right now. Okay.
Thank you.
The zoning, we're requesting, requesting the certain zoning designation, but we're only requesting half of the density that that zoning allows.
That's great.
We'd be willing to sign anything, a development agreement, whatever, so we don't come back in and tell them the advance.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on. Any further questions?
I have one question. You want this zoned commercial simply because it's a rental-type property? You're asking for C2 commercial?
He has to.
Okay. So the applicant requested the C2 HMR because this is, it's in the Walupi Mountain area Overlay District, and that's the comparable zoning that would go for this area that allows for the multi-density that they're requesting. Am I being clear for you? Sorry.
Well, the C2 part would be commercial, correct?
Yes, and then, yes, C2 HMR.
And then you have the Walupi Mountain Overlay District.
Correct.
Why do they need commercial zoning?
The general plan land use designation is commercial for this lot.
Where they want to build, so that's the only reason why the change request is being made.
Right here, Commissioner McCoy. This is showing that this area is designated as community commercial in the general plan. Therefore, we went to commercial.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Got it.
Go ahead, sir.
And the reason we chose this spot is we have to be within so many miles in order to get our funding within supportive services. If we, I'll just put it this way, we chose this project because it's so close to Veterans Administration.
Right.
There will be two full-time veterans staff onsite, offices in our clubhouse, along with our property manager. Our property manager lives on site. The other thing is, I suppose, if I understand this right, we could move across the street that already has the C2 HMR, and we could build 118 story units. These are very low-profile.
So onsite, you have transportation to and from the VA facility there on Walupi Mountain?
I have a question for you. I have a question for you, sir. Okay, so this project is five acres, a little over five acres, and it's zoned C2 with multiple residents. What's the plan for the other three acres that's zoned commercial? You're not, you're only doing the five? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I could answer that. The property owner that's keeping the remainder of the parcel is keeping it for the church. They may, they may use it to build a church, but it's not definite at this point.
Oh, okay, okay. Thanks.
Right, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Any comments? Please step forward one at a time, and you'll be at a three-minute, three-minute speaking allotment, and one, only one, one trip to the podium on this agenda item per person.
Stephen Galloway, 2156 Horseman, 22-year veteran, retired military, three wars. First of all, DAV is not a Veterans Administration. It is a charity that helps veterans. There is a small clinic there that's the size of a doctor. They take all their veterans to Prescott or Vegas for treatment. The veterans would be better served by moving them closer to the facilities, especially if they're homeless, like the hospital, the shopping, and a lot of the other community services that are on the north side of I-40. The veterans would be much better served by that because they would be closer to their needs. The DAV will come in, you've got to apply, do your DD-214. The DAV, as I stated, transports 80% of their patients to Prescott or to Vegas, depending upon their required needs. They do a routine checkup and determine if they need, okay? I've been in the clinic. And they are homeless 30%, and up to 30% of their income. Most homeless people don't have any income. They would be better served by getting the same vouchers in a lower-rent district and, as I said, closer to the medical facilities that are by the hospital and behind there. There's an empty lot there, lots of empty lots down there that are rezoned this way. They're also closer to the stores and transportation needs down at that end instead of all the way up the Walupi. And we wouldn't have the increased traffic. They're willing to give Mission Boulevard to the city, but as the city's already stated, they don't have the money to build the infrastructure that's required, the road that's not there, the road at the other end of Mission that is not there, much less. Also, there's a gas pipeline that crosses through that particular lot. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Nice to see you again. Clifton Oppenheimer Jr., United States Marines, Vietnam, First Reconnaissance Battalion.
Thank you for your service.
Stable vet. Thank you very much. Right now, the VA clinic they're talking about is already overburdened. It takes me three months to get an appointment. We lost our doctor. So that's not as convenient as, you know, having that there for those veterans to be there. They do get transported quite a bit. Also, I don't know who this Department of Veteran Affairs this individual talked to, but they, I have, I've been active with veterans organizations here. I have had no discussion about a housing unit like this coming in at any time in the three years I've been here. I mean, this is like, bam, fireworks, you know? So the relation to the stoplight there, it isn't so much what he's talking about in relation to traffic there. We do have children and stuff, but also, we talked about down the road, there was a question about 47 units down the road, 10,000. The R10 would be only 24 units. I did the numbers. R8 would be like 35. So the traffic would still be the same, you know, with, down the street across from here. Also, like I said, I would like to know if they even talk to any veterans organizations here to see what the need is for veterans. We're transporting veterans in from someplace to live here so that they go to VA clinic? That's not going to work. That's not going to work because you're, because they can't handle them. And the other gentleman was exactly right. They should put it here, here, or put it in Prescott or up in Las Vegas, where they have definitely homeless veterans and a lot more veterans there that are there that are low-income than they do have low-income veterans here that need housing. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name, sir.
Commissioners, my name is George Franceski. I'm speaking in favor of the development, in favor of the rezoning. The location is one that is outstanding for the need that is obvious. There is a strong need for veterans' housing in this community. I have friends that work at the VA clinic, and they are amazed at what the amount of requests are made for housing for the vets. This is going to meet, largely meet, that need. The location is good because it is by the clinic. The gentleman from the company that's developing this had mentioned that the zoning would allow 19 units, they're going to put in 10 units. He's willing to write a letter saying that he'll stay with that, 10 units. He's not going to change that. I've researched the company. They're an outstanding company. They're in several states. They have Catherine Heights down toward Bullhead. That development is very well-done. Something similar to that is a welcome addition to our community. What impresses me about the company also is the management of those units. They are very, very strict on what is allowed in those developments. They would not have built as many as they do and hold on, held on to them as long as they have if they were garbage. Something like this is a nice development. It's definitely a plus. I also was very surprised and pleased when he offered the city a significant amount to put a traffic light at Walupi and Jackson Street. That wasn't pushed on him. He volunteered to do that. He mentioned also that they're going to be two bedrooms. You're not going to have a high density. He mentioned 60% single, the rest married couples. I think it's a good development, and I welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further comment from the public? Please state your name, sir.
Tim Walsh, 2265 Cap Rock. Thank you, Chairman Fredrickson and members of the commission. I applaud the developer. I think they do a great... I think they do a great job in, in Bullhead. That development looks great. I think they do probably do a great job managing it. I think the idea is a great idea. I just think the location is wrong. The previous item that was just denied considered 47 units in 11.8 acres. This one's considering 49 units in five acres. So you're, you're more than double the density of the previous item that you just denied. So I, I'm opposed to this, and I ask that you, you oppose it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Please state your name.
Erlinton L., 2228 Rencon. I agree with everything that Mr. Walsh just said and would reiterate my comments from the earlier zoning, and I apologize for having 3A and 4A, but that's the agenda that I got from the city earlier yesterday. In addition to being opposed to this for the same reasons that have already been stated, I'm also opposed because you're just rezoning from R-110 to this commercial. If the word "veteran" wasn't there, I think that all of our opinions would be different. I applaud the veterans. I'm very patriotic, but without that word "veterans," we would be talking completely different. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Nelson. I've been married to a veteran, Marine Corps veteran, for over 50 years. I have nothing against supplying housing for veterans, but it scares me to have a bunch of homeless veterans that have no ownership in these units. There's a liquor store a half a block away from them. I just worry about what's going to happen to our neighborhood when these veterans get restless or start doing drugs, which we know they do. I kind of worry about the community. I just, I, I just think there's a better place rather than putting them, and especially if this other unit gets developed, this can be full of kids. You don't want a bunch of veterans that are either abusing alcohol or drugs in this community. I don't want it. I don't think most of the people do want it. And I'm not sure if this gentleman, are all of his buildings that he's been doing over the last, have they always been veteran-accessible, or is this something new? I think they look beautiful, but are they all, have they been occupied by veterans? That would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bishop Leonard Walker, and I, from Reconciliation Catholic Church. So I grant you that I'm speaking in my own self-interest on this, but I'm concerned about an attitude of "not in my backyard." And talking about the various divisions that can be within veterans between those who have and those who have not concerns me as a bishop, as a priest, as a minister. That kind of talk really offends me. Secondly, this is a project proposed, which is under a very strict timeline in order to get built. And if it's not met, it gets delayed even further because we're talking about something that has to go through VA and all the other kinds of government agencies. This is not just a local building project. And my concern is that you can talk about it should be, or even Prescott, it should be in Henderson, it should be somewhere else, but no one's proposing that. So we can't speak for another community. If we say it's not here, we're saying "not in my backyard," not in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
John Marsley, 2287 Mesa Drive. When I bought my house in Granite Bluffs, there was a big sign that said "Desert vistas, open spaces, and mountain views." That's part of 2020. That's in there. The other thing I noticed, yeah, the map, Granite Bluffs is basically an island. Everything around it is commercial, okay? And now you're degrading from R-110, R-10 to commercial. The problem with that, as I see it, now I'll give you an example. Mission Bank asked for a rezone on a building behind them because they were going to use it for accounting. No problem. Everybody agreed. One and a half years later, that change was used as justification to establish a commercial lot on the end of Karen. What I'm saying is, what I'm concerned about is with all these incremental changes, all of a sudden, they're going to have an area that is surrounded by R-16, commercial, and then the values go down. They have to go down because everything in the vicinity is R-16. I totally disagree. The priest, the bishop, has a vested interest. He's selling the land. He's going to make it look as good as gold. The guy who's delivering the speech for the building is going to say, "It's great."
Thank you.
But I'm saying it's to the disadvantage of the people who bought Granite Bluffs for the specific reason that they did.
I guess my name is Art Hammond. I live at 2106 Horseman Avenue. I also own an adjoining property. I am the person that sent a series of email questions that were forwarded to Mr. Wagner, which he graciously responded to. I didn't know anything about this until very recently. I saw the sign and started to ask the questions. I don't have time because there's just three-minute rule to go through everything that I ask. So I'll just share just a couple items. I asked about the, whether or not that they would be disabled or homeless veterans was told they are disabled, living in substandard housing, living with friends, living with family, and homeless.
Sir, sir, for your information, we, not to catch you off-
And I know that.
We, we were forwarded all your emails, so we are-
Right, well, this is for the audience too, because I don't know that they know that. My concern, my wife and I, my wife's brother, my brother-in-law, lived in a similar type situation in Las Vegas. It was an apartment-type setting. The program was affiliated with Veterans Administration. They had onsite supervision slash case managers. The issue was, and we found out later, residents in that particular program were selling drugs to my brother-in-law, and, you know, there was just a series of problems. It was, really was a more of a problem than probably a benefit to him. Our concern is for our neighborhood. We have children. They live in the neighborhood. I, you know, again, homeless people need a place to live. I'm not objecting to that. The program sounds like a great program, but I'm wondering if this is the proper location for it. And, and again, if I could make a request, it would be that you would table the motion, look at it closer, because I know the questions that I've asked, that you've just received copies of recently, and I think it, you owe it to the community to look into the matter more closely, not just the fact of rezoning and the units look great, but look at what impact that will have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ken Matheson. I'm on 2281 Cap Rock in Granite Bluffs. Just barely moved to Kingman. Given what's happening in this meeting, if this gets approved, I'm sorry, I moved here. We came here to buy a nice property, which we have, but you can see, this is nothing but creep, zoning creep. Yeah, this is commercial, but no, it's not. This is, this is houses. This isn't commercial. It's the same thing, only this is worse than the one we just talked about because it's higher density. And I don't want to say anything bad about the military. I never served, and I am grateful for them that did, or for those that did, but this is the wrong place for this. If you approve these two things, you are the gatekeepers. All of the R-10 will be gone because that's what's happening here. And I was surprised with all of those that are in an R-6 district, that they wanted to keep it R-10. Why? Because you want it to be nicer homes, a nice neighborhood. Think of where you live. You want to have high density next to you? Or do you? Causes problems. So think about that as you look at it, because, like I say, I think it will all become R-6 or commercial if you don't stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Barry Nelson, 2112 Horseman Avenue. This is kind of not my backyard thing. However, it's another downgrade. People I have talked to, the minute they hear duplexes, say, "Huh, not in my backyard." You're downgrading the neighborhood by putting in duplexes, especially rental duplexes. Upset?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, can you all? Thomas Hatchley, 82nd Airborne Army. The thing I'm concerned about is two things. Number one, the vets. I can tell you firsthand that VA clinics aren't worth a hoot. They're not worth a hoot. If you're going to help older vets, you need to get them near a hospital, a VA hospital, not a clinic. Clinics take for months and months and months to get in there. I'm telling you firsthand. The other thing is, if we brought these vets, okay, you've got a certain percentage of homes that are going to have one person living in them, and another certain percentage is going to have multiple people living in them. Doesn't mean they're all going to be vets. What it means is going to be no income, no income or low income, period. So why would we take an R-10, an R-10-zoned and put commercial stuff in there, right next to a liquor store? Doesn't make sense to me. I know what kind of people we're going to end up with there, and the county's going to pay the remaining balance? I don't think so. It doesn't work good that way. We have children, young children, little bit older children living in our community. We bought into that community knowing it was an R-10, thinking that it was never going to be destroyed, but now we're having to fight this again. So I'm concerned about the children more than anything else, and we all have children, from little ones to bigger ones. I have some myself. The other thing I'm concerned about is the property value going down, and I think we all know that once you go put commercial property with this kind of a situation in an R-10 zone, yeah, your property value is going to go down, that's for sure. There's no doubt about it. So, you know, I'm a little upset that we, we would even consider something like this. What's the matter with leaving our R-10 property, R-10, letting a developer come in and put nice homes in there? This is the good part of town. Why are we going to destroy it? And eventually, we will if we keep going like this. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I see no further comments, or I close out. I close off the open meeting and-
I think, I think, does he have a right to address?
Yeah. Any more comments?
Sylvia? I, I closed it off, ma'am. I'm sorry.
There was just a couple comments I wanted to clarify on, and Gregory can answer some of them too. There was some documentation submitted that maybe everybody didn't see, like the letters from the county, the letters from the Veterans Administration, also the points that there will be staff onsite from the VA. That probably wasn't mentioned earlier as well. The other thing about this situation is that, on this map, you'll see all the other C2 HMR surrounding this particular property here. So again, if this reason doesn't go through, any applicant can come in on any of these remaining C2 HMR, even the ones closer to where most of these folks live, and just apply for the building permit and the site plan. There will be no process like this.
Yep.
So that's just one thing that we should point out, as, as well as, at this time, the developer is volunteering to participate in some kind of funding for the traffic signal, which we could condition as the applicant would meet with the city to create a development agreement, because we don't know all the details at this time. The other thing that would come in with this project is that a portion of Mission Boulevard would be dedicated to the city, and the part that the applicant is responsible for would be paved by the applicant, so there is more being paved on Mission Boulevard than would be if they just come into another site already developed. I think that's a majority of it. We did have the notification area as a reminder. I am very glad that people have showed up tonight, but a majority of them are outside of this notification for this particular project. I understand the two are close together, but just kind of a reminder that we had a few that were actually part of the notification, and then everybody that's here tonight. I guess that's about it. Gregory, do you have anything else to add before they close the? Okay, just wanted to clarify those few points at least.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
We provide and build. Otherwise, we would not have come here at all. When you apply for funding through the state, you have generally about a 20% to 30% success rate. So for every 10 applications for projects that are submitted, two or three will make it. We feel very, we've done this, like I said, for over 20 years, and this site will work. The site across the street will probably work. The sites closer to the hospital will not be awarded, just because of the, the competitive nature and the points that you're awarded by the state. We know exactly what we have to do to get a project. I would say, in, in place of the light, if, if, you know, if there's more desire, we could also take and extend the paving along Mission Boulevard to the, I guess it'd be to the west. That's more desirable for people than a traffic light. And then I would just ask, you know, I've heard "table it, table it, table it," but I haven't heard any specifics as to why. I'd like to, you know, if you're going to table it, ask, tell me why. What are the specifics? I've addressed the five main concerns that I heard through the comments, agreed to pay for a stoplight. I don't want to see a table just so it gets kicked down the road and never happens.
Sir? Open it up here for commission members for discussion.
Oh, gosh. Are we making, how we feel about this project, or what are we doing? How's the discussion?
For, for one, I'd like to point out, and I know my comment was made, that maybe we're not well-prepared, and yet, in fact, we are giving all this information probably five days before we even come- come to our meetings. I know probably the same thing along with City Council is given, well aware, we're emailed the information or on tablets. So we are, we do our diligent homework and read, 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 and everything that you guys do. So we are well-informed when we sit up here and do make these decisions. And I hear, I hear the nimbus. But I think, I think this developer, and unfortunately, it didn't go so well for the first one, but I think they're answering all your questions. I think they're willing to do a light. I think they're willing to put in lights. They're willing to do improvements. Every, every development that I have studied is upon the utmost. It's something that I think we would be proud to have, have here in this city. And I think it's probably something much needed. Can we, can we, can we dictate what one fellow, fellow person is going to do if they're going to get on drugs? No, we can't. You can't dictate that your next-door neighbor is going to get on drugs, have a drinking problem. None of us can dictate that. Alls we can do is, and from every reason I, is they don't tolerate this in their facilities. They don't put up with this kind of nonsense. It's a, it's a pleased community. And everything that I've seen, it's something that's needed here.
Yeah, and I'd like, I, I feel that it is needed desperately. And I appreciate the commitment to trying to bring this here. I think it's suitable. And I do live in the area, so I'm not just speaking out of, you know, just speaking the hip here. I don't think it'll be a detriment. They already shared that they do all their screening, and if they, they are on drugs and stuff, they're going to get them out. It does conform to the general plan. And I don't think, personally, on a personal level, I think that they paid the ultimate price to give us that freedom to have those views and to have a great property and a great place to live. And my heart is wanting for them to, and they're not homeless, they're low-income, and there's a lot of low-income veterans. And I think that they, based on the pictures of twenty-year-old properties, they're not a company that's going to make things worse. I believe that it'll make things better. In my personal opinion. And I think these are two different, completely different matters. And they do have other options, you know, they can go right next door, like they said. But I think it's, it conforms to the general plan. And I, I like what they have to offer. And I appreciate the fact that they're willing quickly, without being asked, to volunteer that kind of financial money to providing a light or whatever is needed to keep everybody in a safer, safer place, or, you know, safer streets and stuff. So that's my opinion, based on what I've heard. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you. I think your presentation was excellent. Kind of spot on with all the points that we've been targeting and have been targeting, you know, from this commission. I just want to say, you know, that volunteering to put in a traffic light to pay a portion of that is, I think it's above and beyond what the requirements are at this time. And I just want to say thank you for that. And also for paving the other side of that road. So it's alleviating the burden from the city, you know, financially. And I, you know, I'm also married to a vet. And I do think that we, we need some sort of a community for the vets and stuff like that. The only question I have for you is, this is a vet facility? Or is it sanctioned for the, like, the HUD housing, the Section Eight?
So, I'm not sure I know the question, but the Arizona Department of Housing gives points. Their, their rules and guidelines are about two hundred pages long, and you can earn points for lots of things. But one of the big things they do is give points for veterans' housing.
Right.
So it's funded through the Arizona Department of Housing, working with the VA to get the vouchers. I guess I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, that's what I, well, I wanted to know, you know, what is your percentages at this point? You know, I am familiar with Section Eight housing. I worked for this, with the state, housing and different, you know, divisions over the years. So I am familiar with that. So I just wanted to know what the percentages are. Is it going to be, like, mostly, like, for the vets? Or is it going to be mostly catering to, like, homeless? Or, you know, in the community? So I, I think that's my question.
So it's a hundred percent veteran project?
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Okay. Thank you.
We're bound, there will, I don't get into the legality of it, but we will be bound legally to maintain it as a hundred percent veteran, whether we want to or not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I applaud you for your willingness to offer where most of the times we have to drag it out of people to get anything. Are you sure you don't want to fund the light a hundred percent?
Will you finance it?
I'm just asking. I support your one hundred percent. Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing, and that is that a lot of the, a lot of the residents had shared that, you know, there's a better place to have this. And I think that more is, that there should be more. I mean, you know, there is other places, but nobody else is coming forward. And we have someone. And so I appreciate that.
Make a, want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reason.
With any of those guidelines or?
For, well, with the understanding that the developer will make a sizable donation towards the traffic light. And I don't know, there are any other...
And completing the paving on?
And completing. Well, the pavement is part of the recommendation of the...
Well, he only, is there only proposing like for part of Mission? So is he going to pave the other side of?
Well, I thought it was either or.
It was either or.
It was either or.
Yeah.
Either or.
I put ten percent, which would be somewhere around a hundred, hundred and ten thousand, either towards a light. And you can hold it till you get enough money to do a light, or we'll put...
You said one percent.
Did I say ten? Yeah.
It's one.
I meant one percent.
We'll take ten.
I just wanted to help you out there. I want to help you out there.
I want his signature.
So whether you want to use it for a traffic light now, or hold on to it, or we can put the pavement in, a hundred thousand works.
Well, I think with the motion, that, you know, to agree to it, but the money go for the traffic light, because I think that's the concern.
That's, yes.
That is the concern of the community is, is a traffic light, you know, so I...
So I have a motion with agreeing to...
With the traffic.
Approve with a traffic light. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Sandy.
Mr. Fredrickson?
Favor.
Mr. Glass?
Approve.
Mr. Keith?
Approve.
Should McCoy's approve?
Approve.
Five to zero.
Five to zero.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item.
Fabulous, guys. We're all five.
All right. I wish this would have been first.
No, because this is that the people don't want the density. The density is the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for taking...
Thank you, sir.
I like that.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Thank you for your words.
I was hoping that you would take it right between issues, because I was so dry, I barely talked.
All right. Next item.
This gentleman should have been first.
It should have.
I would have answered all the questions for her.
Right.
I think that... Because they don't want the smaller lots, the density, the traffic. It ain't going to change the traffic. Ain't going to change.
All right, are we ready, Sylvia?
Sure, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, one more item.
All right. Item B, discussion item related to sheds. At the November thirteenth, two thousand eight Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff presented a discussion item related to the possibility of requiring courtesy permits for portable sheds less than two hundred square feet in floor area. The Planning and Zoning Commission asked staff to conduct additional research and bring this discussion item back. Sylvia?
Okay. I brought a little information back.
Okay.
Hopefully it'll help. So I, I'll go over it just a little bit. But basically, we're sometimes, staff in Planning and Zoning Commission has received complaints from property owners related to sheds being too close to their property lines, too high, too ugly. So we do know that part. Sheds are included in the accessory structure definition. If an accessory structure is less than two hundred square foot in size, a property owner does not need to obtain a building permit. City staff is unable to review placement of sheds, per to which results in a number of complaints received and property owners having to move sheds after they have placed them. At this time, all accessory structures are supposed to meet the development appearance criteria. I showed you the setback requirements before, but basically sheds are supposed to be no closer to the rear than four feet and have to meet the side setbacks of any, whatever district they're in. That's kind of the same, it's the setbacks. I did that comparison last time, basically saying that the city of Phoenix, Scottsdale, and Flagstaff, they don't require the applicant to obtain a building permit if the accessory building is under two hundred square feet. The placement of sheds need to meet setbacks, so that's the same. In the city of Scottsdale, though, there's a requirement for planning services staff to review the site plan prior to placement of the shed on the property. And in Flagstaff, they require a zoning permit. Some options, I re-looked at some of the options as you had asked last time. So some are similar, some were revised just a little bit. But the first option would be to revise the city of Kingman zoning ordinance to require a permit for all accessory structures. There'd be no fee for this permit. Planning and zoning would be able to review to ensure setbacks and development appearance criteria are met. Came up with the possibility of exempting prefabricated sheds that are three hundred square foot or less, such as those purchased at home improvement stores or online, like Home Depot, Walmart, from the development appearance criteria. It's already kind of built a certain way. So three hundred square foot was a size that we came up with, because most of the sheds are around two hundred, two hundred and forty square feet, and not too many were over three hundred. By then, you're starting to hit, like, a detached garage or something like that. But that's going to be a small garage, anyway. So that was one option we came with. So that was the adjustment. Last time, I didn't have a size in there to exempt out from the development appearance criteria. Metal buildings used for accessory structures, such as a garage, would not be exempt from the development appearance criteria. Prefabricated shed materials typically include wood, resin, and colored metal. This exemption would eliminate the current requirement for a shed to have stucco or siding over metal sheds, basically. This exemption would also eliminate the requirement for roof materials, such as composite tile or clay tiles, on prefabricated sheds. Majority of these sheds already meet the development appearance criteria. And then I already talked about the size. And then, just, just a side note, in just the last month, we've had a lot of complaints on sheds. I, more than, more than we have before. So people are not liking that they're close to their property line. And then, when one person noticed that it's close to their property line, that person notices that there's five more in the neighborhood that are not close to the property line. So it is an ongoing problem. And the main problem with that is most people don't know they have to meet a setback. And so we could talk to Home Depot, we can talk to Lowe's, but there's no guarantee they're going to be able to tell them. And plus, people are buying that live in the county and the city, so I, you know, I don't know if they're going to know both requirements or not. So this was our way of trying to handle these complaints, so that we don't have to call people after and say, "You need to move your shed now that it's been placed." That's what's basically going on now. I believe that's it. These are some of the pictures that one of the fellows provided to us early on about some of the sheds. And then otherwise, you can ask me to bring more research, or make a motion to exempt accessory structures less than three hundred square feet from the development appearance criteria, and require permits for all accessory structures regardless of size, or take no further action. Any questions?
Now, yes, with, and I know with Keith's, Keith's discussion last time, that they were trying to do the permit process online, and I like that idea.
Yeah.
And I think probably most of us, I'm going to think, and would probably be in agreement, if that's an option, with, you know, three, is just to have a general out there, so people know what their requirements are. There's no, you know, government watching you. You know, just, here's the requirements. You got to be so far from your sidewalk, and so far from your back wall. And I think that's all that's, all that's what would be required of that.
It's definitely more of a courtesy.
Yeah.
Review at this point.
Yeah. And I think at address, because I know Keith had addressed that their department is getting bombed with complaints.
We both are, at Planning and Zoning and Building.
And I know, and I know, I know you have, Sylvia. And, and I've gone out to, and I can't remember his name now, the gentleman that owns up there on Northern and Stockton Hill. And I've talked to him about this ongoing problem. And we're probably looking at, you know, a no-fee permit process. And he was all on board and thought, you know, that was great. And he would be on board with the city to allow his, tell his clients that, hey, you know, no hassle fee, just check with the city what your requirements are. And I think probably even the gentleman up there on Northern and Banks is probably would be in agreement, too.
Chairman, and if this was passed, we'd definitely put it out to the public that this is something that was passed. Yeah. Like we've done before with the cargo containers, tiny hoes, put it out in the paper and on our Facebook, just to know, so they'll know the change.
I don't know. I don't think that it should require a permit. I know there's no fees, and it's just you're doing it out of a courtesy. I just, I just think we should just put it on our, you know, website, Facebook, whatever, you know, public media, that you have to observe your setbacks, you know? Don't place a shed until you know what your setbacks are. I don't think that it should.
I think the problem with that is, most people are well not informed. We've heard that in this last election. I didn't, I didn't know there's a meeting. I didn't know this. There, people don't, don't care, don't read the news, don't look on the computer, so to...
I don't think this is going to help either.
Well...
I have a response to that. Commissioner, yeah.
It may not, but it, it, at least puts it out there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know...
Put this in the water bill, too. I guess you could put it in the newsletter.
Commissioner, I can definitely check on that. I have to agree with Chairman Fredrickson, because I still have people come to the counter today saying they didn't know the development appearance criteria was changed for the metal buildings, or what's going on... was changed for the metal buildings, or what's going on with the cargo homes? Can we have, uh, cargo containers? Can we have tiny homes?
Yeah.
I, and so, um, I would like to say that if we just posted it on our Facebook and did some education, but I don't believe that's gonna be enough.
Yeah, I don't think either way is gonna actually help it.
You can only try.
Yep, you gotta do what you can do.
Otherwise, we'll be telling people to keep moving their sheds.
I think been doing nothing, which, which has been going on is not been working.
We should just ban shit.
We should just ban buildings.
There you go.
I guess my concern is, is does, does, um, complimentary free for the sheds turn into a fee later on? And, you know, because you have to do more work and stuff like that, I mean...
I'm definitely not in charge of budget, but what, Keith, do you think that's possible?
I mean, I'm just saying, like, we, we could say it's...
Like, for the department-wise, yeah.
Free now, but, and that's easy to pass, but then it goes into costs eventually.
Good evening, Commissioner, and Vice Chair, and Commissioners. So the city council sets the, the fees. Uh, the, the thing that we started out with this, you know, and discussed earlier with you guys about, about this, yeah, we don't need more permits, we don't need more inspections. But what we're finding, and it's very interesting, is we've, we actually went out, we had a complaint, uh, well, actually Sylvia drove this one, so, so, and one of my people. But, uh, actually went out to complain while this guy was within a foot of his setback. So he has to move this shed. He didn't realize it, he didn't do it, you know, out of, out of hatred or anything. He just didn't realize it. And, uh, and while, while we're there, well, I, that guy's, and that guy's, and that guy's. So it was, it, it's, it's a wide sweeping thing. Uh, will it fix it? No. I mean, will going out on Facebook fix it? No, but just trying to get some more information out there. To report a little bit on our electronic, uh, application, the final piece was created this week to that, so we'll be able to probably within the next couple of weeks start accepting those, all those electronic, uh, electronic applications. So, uh, I think it's another step, you know? Will, will it fix it? No. You know, but it does make it a little, a little more aware of that it's a requirement. Uh, most people don't, don't realize that. We get people come in and building without permits, they just didn't think they'd have to have a permit. They didn't want to ask, but they just didn't think so. So I think it's just yet another thing that we can do to help educate. That's, and that's it. So either way, I don't know that it's a detriment to what we do, but I think it's just another, another good idea to try to get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia? Any comment from the public?
If you have a comment.
Hold on a minute, there's, state your name, please.
Ken Watkins, 2093 Robert Mitchum. Along, I agree with Keith, Mr. Eaton. I, but I, I hate big government, I hate having more of, you know, them inferring in our lives. But on the same token, too, you know, we all buy property, and we all have homes, and we all want to guard the, the value of that home. And when we have neighbors that sort of push the limit, it frustrates us. Uh, I have kids that live in Rancho, the newer section of Rancho Santa Fe, and they were under the impression that the CCNRs in there require, they can put an accessory building, but it has to match the tile roofs that all the homes in there have. But you go in there, and you see some people have, have con, have conformed with that, others just have asphalt shingle. So I think there is probably a need for some direction and guideline, even though it's a no-fee permit. I think that way they, the public will, will realize, you know, we do want to have a say in what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, it says any structure, anything, 300 square foot. Is there a height on that? I mean, because a structure can be many, many things. Sorry, thank you, Sylvia.
Commissioner, the, the topic is sheds, but it does include all accessory structures.
All accessory structures?
Yep, sheds hasn't been our only problem, but it's just one of the bigger ones.
So when they get too big, they're gonna go fall into a real permit, not...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's saying any structures, any, any accessory structures. It's just a broad, it's just a broad...
Less than 300 square feet.
300, yeah.
Meaning you'd have to list a she shed.
Yeah, she shed.
That's it.
I've heard that before, yeah.
Buy a bunch of 300 square foot sheds and bolt them together, and then just cut the wall out of between them.
Now you got a garage.
That's right.
Moving right along.
So we're gonna make a motion, or...
I need a motion.
I, uh... I take the position that you can't protect the public from itself all the time. And all these little rules and regulations, I think are ridiculous, and it's a total waste of time. And it's putting more and more burden on staff every time we do this. So far as I'm concerned, you oughta just take no further action and move on.
I'll second that.
Oh, is that a motion, Scott?
It can be, yes.
Want to state it as a motion?
As a motion, take no further action and move on.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Chair Frederickson?
I'm gonna disagree with that, I'm not in favor of going forward with that.
Mr. Goss?
Want me to come back to you?
Come back.
I want to go with, I got confused on the if, on the, I want to go with Commissioner McCoy's answer.
His motion was just to take no action.
Take no further action, I agree with McCoy, Commissioner McCoy. Thank you, I want you to say whatever. Yeah, that's, thank you. I'm for it.
Commissioner Shores?
I second it.
You're for it?
I am.
Commissioner Goss?
Sure, let's just leave it how it is.
Okay. All right, so it's 4 to 1.
All righty. Finally. Announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements availability or attendance at conferences and seminars. Request for agenda items for future, oh, excuse me, let me back up. I missed one here. Item B, annual planning and zoning report luncheon. Each year, the Planning and Zoning Division prepares an annual report for its activity to the previous year and presents it to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a luncheon. The luncheon is held at a local restaurant and is hosted by the City of Kingman. The Planning and Zoning Commission needs to select a date, time, and place for the luncheon.
And you guys' party plan? I'm impressed. So is it supposed to be sooner than later, later than...
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at, we're obviously gonna be February.
Yeah. There's a calendar right behind that item.
We don't have that.
We don't have a calendar?
Oh, you do, because I know, I know you do, because I put it in.
Oh, maybe it's all the way back here somewhere?
It's in the very back.
Very, 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 very.
Boy, I wrote all over this stuff, too.
Well, the days that are crossed off is like the Planning and Zoning meetings.
Oh, wait, here we go, there we go. It's under Item 5, I think. Yes.
Is there a certain time?
Well, it's usually a luncheon, like a lunch. Whatever's convenient for you folks, whatever's a good day for everybody.
Okay.
And the, the city will host it.
All righty. All the way to the very, very back.
Here, you can use mine. Yeah.
Before, right before 6. Before 6.
So I don't know if people really would have to have me there, but, um, I'm gonna be out of town on the 1st, the 4th, and all the days after the 21st. So there we go.
The 1st.
The 1st, the 4th, and every day after the 21st.
Yeah, sometimes after the 11th would probably be better because we haven't even started on it.
Or the 20th?
Which is a Wednesday?
19th or 20th?
Either of those days are fine with me.
I'm open, anything, you know? I just need a notice, so I'm open.
Whichever day you guys like.
19th, we're good for everybody, or 20th?
19th, yeah, that sounds good.
Sure, let's do the 19th.
Excellent.
19th?
That okay with you?
That's fine with me.
And where?
Oh, I didn't know, we had to...
McDonald's.
Yeah, bar.
If you like Italian food, and Carabaldi's is fabulous.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I've never been there, and I wanted to go.
But it's loud in there.
Loud, I like loud.
But it is good. We could bring these.
Would it just be reserved for us, probably? Is that the one on Andy Devine? Yeah, so it'd be just for us.
He opens from 11 to...
2.
2?
Yeah, I vote for that, that'd be good.
Okay. So...
As long as he's on board with it.
11?
I just wanted to, um, double check. Did you guys say Wednesday, the 20th, might be okay? Because we're gonna come right back from a holiday weekend and then dive into the lunches.
Oh, okay.
So I was just wondering if we could have that one day.
What's the holiday?
Well...
President's Day.
Yeah, it's on the 18th.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
And so it would, it might be helpful if it was that Wednesday, if you guys were okay.
On the 20th?
That's fine.
Yeah, just so we can get our stuff ready.
All right.
Right, thanks. Okay.
I just colored in the 19th.
I know.
Yeah, so I'm...
I have another color, you need another color.
So we got the date, we'll get the time.
11 o'clock.
11?
We're gonna have to, I guess, confer with him to make sure...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll call him tomorrow and make sure it's okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And you'll send us like a little reminder?
I will send you a nice little invitation.
Oh, so sweet.
That sounds good.
Okay, so...
Excellent.
We have that solved. All righty, Item 6. Limited to announcements and availability or attendance at conferences and seminars. Request for agenda items for future meetings and request for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. See none?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
I have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Please don't cable that.